...for comment from the President Davis.
Let us pray. Eternal and all wise God, we thank you for allowing us to see a day we've never seen before. Now God, we ask that you move by your Spirit and your might. Continue to bless us, oh God, and stand by us because you declared that the Lord is my shepherd and I shall not want. God, we thank you in advance for what you can do, what you will do, and what you're going to do. You are God that's able, you'll burden bear, you're counselor, and you are deliverer. Meet us here, God, in this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, everyone. All right, we have the approval of minutes from our September 8th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor Willie.
Yes, Mrs. Cook, it's always a pleasure to give out the service awards. We have three folks here tonight. Two folks, oh, there's Susan. Couldn't tell you what it was called. But we have three folks here tonight that are more than deserving of the service awards, and I'd like to make a presentation to them tonight. The first one is Susan. It must be gold. Will we hold this while you shake everybody's hand?
Congratulations, Susan.
Thank you.
Susan, if you want to stand up here, we'll get some to take a look.
Mayor, how many years service?
Twenty.
Twenty years. Congratulations, Susan.
She came here as a mayor child. Barry Smaller. Seen him around before firehouse. Barry?
Twenty years.
How many years, Barry?
Twenty.
Twenty also.
No, I'm not going to do this. I'll probably get us. And we have Bill Willis.
I just look at size of the box and just wonder.
Okay, we're all getting our picture taken. Ever done when you might rush or something? Don't worry. Anybody want to gather around? Yep. Need help for that?
The Heatherland, it's supposed to be sixty yards. He go ahead and stand there. Don't get mad because I don't see a safe situation. Seven, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you all. Mayor. We have a request from the Neighborhood Service Center to abate taxes on Sixth South Street. That's a property they bought to convert into homes for three families. The total tax bill would be $1,807.34. So if you counsel us of a mind, you'd like to abate this tax.
Mayor, that's an abatement under the state law that we're allowed to offer? Is that correct?
That is.
I'd make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With that, thanks again to the, well, they're gone already, to the employees for their years of service. Thank you for the abatement. I'm sitting here.
Any questions for the mayor? All right. Mr. Richardson.
President Cook Counsel, I have a couple of things for your consideration this evening. The first is Easton Volunteer Fire Department's 5K Run. The applicant is our very own Mr. Don Abatella. And this is a 5K rates run walk that they've done the past few years. The route has remained the same. It starts at the Easton Fire Department. It crosses over Magnolia Street, joins the rails to Trails, follows that through RTC Park, ends at Chapel Road, follows along Chapel Road, down Washington Street, back to Creamery Lane, and then returning to the Fire Department. They need a closure of Leonardrick Drive during the event. They need crossing guard assistance at North Aurora and Magnolia and Aurora and Washington to aid the runners and walkers. This has been supported and recommended for approval from the Easton Police Department.
Make a motion, Ruth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second item in your agenda this evening is a recommendation for our website and meeting agenda management. I'm actually going to respectfully request that you punt this to your next meeting. This morning, we discussed this in the staff meeting, and we've provided the staff with examples from the vendor of choice, from our IT Director, Mr. Scott Messick, and we have not received all full input back from them. I'd also like to share those examples with you as the council so that you can look at those examples. We'll pick some of the ones that are more appropriate and more of the style of the town of Easton for your review, and we'd like you to consider that at your next council Last, I'm going to add an agenda item for you this evening. So today, I want to remind all of our residents in the town of Easton that the 2020 census ends on September 30th. It is imperative that we get as much count and participation as we possibly can. Currently, we are at 73.9%, which exceeds our participation last time. We are currently the 38th highest responding municipality in the state of Maryland and the top responder on the eastern shore. We'd like to continue to exceed those marks because every individual counted in this community helps us from funding sources from the federal government. So if you have had an enumerator visit your resident, please reach out and make sure that you're trying to respond to the census data collection and those enumerators. Those are the residents that still haven't responded to the 2020 census, and we encourage you for all of those to respond. It helps us, and we look forward to getting over maybe the 80% dot mark.
I'd be back.
That's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Richardson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ben Ember.
I do not have anything for this evening.
Okay. That was easy. All right, moving on. Next, we have Ms. Tracy War from the EDC to update on the sidewalk and the beautification committee.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? I'm going to try this with my mask on. Okay? So, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. This is, purpose of this is to give you an update on the lane closure, which, of course, we discussed two weeks ago, and also to talk about the beautification committee, which is a newly formed committee by the Easton Business Alliance. So I'm actually going to just get out of the way and allow the experts do what experts do. So to that end, I'm going to invite Jeff Langford up from the Easton Business Alliance and Discover Easton, and he's going to present some information about the lane closure. And Natalie, can you hand out the, you know, space?
Good evening once again, President Cook Counsel. Thank you again for allowing us this time to talk again about the outdoor dining on Washington Street. Natalie's handing out some of our materials for this evening. I'm looking at this sheet right here that outlines specifically the outdoor dining. Last meeting, we looked at, you know, expanding it hopefully to the waterfowl weekend. We did get to the end of October, learning that the rentals of the barriers would only be until the end of October. We looked at the different ways of phasing this, and we will have more here in just a second, but we just want to remind you that we are in that temporary phase at the moment. So we are really, really focused again on, is it functioning? Is it beneficial to the businesses? And very, very important, is it safe for our residents as well? So on the next page where it says outdoor dining update, just a very brief walk around with the businesses today. Again, businesses are showing very strong support or indifferent support to the outdoor dining. They're seeing more usage as the weather is getting better outside. It's not quite as hot as it has been previously. And really, they just think that it's a good program to continue going. Very appreciative that the vote was to extend it to October 31st. We did have an incident last week, which is worth noting. This was not during outdoor dining date. This was earlier in the week, but we did have a vehicular accident on Washington Street right there in front of where the outdoor dining would be, and it involved side swiping of vehicles and a head-on collision. So that was, of course, some concern. So we definitely wanted to talk more about those safety measures and to provide some diagrams of what we were talking about last time to give you some more information about what we could do to potentially make that a little bit safer than where we're at right now. So if you go to the next page, safety improvements to the temporary parking space dining, we would recommend that we consider continuously running those impact resistant barriers the entire length of the closure. Right now, we have the impact resistant barriers on the end caps, and we have the fencing along the perimeter there. And we've identified, working with engineering and other partners, that fencing is not the most ideal situation if you do have side swiping, or if you do have a vehicle coming in backing into that. And so if we were able to do the impact resistant barriers all along there, that would certainly help. I think also what we could do here is maybe pull those back afoot from where they are currently, just to give a little bit more room for the traffic to go through there safely. And I'm also recommending that we add wheel stops to the front of every one of those barricades, four foot out, so if a vehicle is trying to park, they won't bump into that barricade. The force of barricades is supposed to be impact resistant, but any extra measure that we can add to keep vehicles from getting that close to people, I think is worth exploring. And then also, we were talking, we have the traffic cones out there currently, but we're also saying that as an optional addition, we could replace those with delineator posts, which you'll see pictures of all this on the next page. But those delineator posts are a little bit taller, more reflective, easier to see when you're traveling. It catches your eye, so it might be a good investment to make. We are talking about some significant, somewhat significant investment on the town's behalf on this one, especially when it comes to purchasing those barriers, those waterfill barriers. And so as you'll see on the next page, a couple of images of what we are discussing here. It in some way aligns with what we've talked about too with beautification of this. I certainly think that when you have some uniformity, it does clean up the look a bit. But just having some of those wheel stops in place to act almost as curbage, I think certainly helps. Again, the delineator post adding some higher visibility for traffic. And on the very next page, just a brief cost estimate, the waterfill barriers, we've identified a couple of them on varying pricing. The green ones that are pictured here are $552 apiece, which if you need approximately 18, would be $9,936. But there's also other options. White ones pictured here are actually $315. So an investment like that would be $5,670. You look at things like the wheel stops, they're $73 apiece, the delineator post, $30 apiece. Those are a little bit cheaper options, but again, going towards that safety measure. I mean, I think what's very important to consider here is any investment like this should be thought of as long-term. Of course, these can be used for the outdoor dining pilot program for the next two months, but I think that these assets could be used around town for other events, for construction projects, and perhaps other temporary situations like the parklets present to us right now. And then finally, just a quick update kind of to go over our conversation two weeks ago. What is the next step? What are we going to do after this pilot program? And what we're going to do is we're going to do a study with Easton Businesses and find out what would they want? Would they benefit from permanent parklets? Something that's really built for strength, security, impact resistance fully, but also implements those beautification measures as well? Because we want to be able to report to the council very early wintertime, right around January, if we think it merits coding to be involved and some permitting to be involved, or if maybe businesses just don't see the value in that. Maybe we just say the pilot program was enough, and that's where we end it. So we're going to do that work this fall, early winter, so we can come back and present that to you folks here as well. And I think, again, we have those assets in place that they can be used in other areas. Waterfowl might be able to benefit from those. Perhaps it's an opportunity that we can take some of the police vehicles away because we have these impact resistant barriers. Maybe it helps cut down over time for them. I really think there's some opportunities there. I really think we should take a look at that as an option to improve now, but also improve down the line. So any questions for me on just the proposal, just to improve the safety of the sidewalk dining as it stands now?
What would the turnaround time be as far as ordering those and getting them here to be used if we were trying to do this before the end of October?
So both of the sites that I looked at for pricing there said next day delivery. It looks, and also bulk purchasing options, so the pricing that are just very simple estimates there could also come down potentially if we buy 20 or whatever it may be. It may not be quite as expensive as that, but we would have to work with the vendor to find that answer. But I did want to identify ones that were not one back order, that were going to take until October to get them, which wouldn't be very, you know, very helpful in our situation as it stands.
Are these prices balanced? Or they?
They're purchased. They would be owned by the town.
Become ours.
Become ours. We could use them for anything once this is over. I think aesthetically, they would be nice because they all match. Again, if we have waterfowl closures, you could use those for events. If we have construction where we need a little extra safety, they're available for that as well. So I think that the cost certainly is a little high, perhaps, for just this pilot program, but having them available for more than that is what makes it worth it, in my opinion.
Jeff, I have just one comment, I guess, about the long-term idea, you know, businesses are interested in that. It'd be nice to know whether that's a little sooner than January. I guess in my thought process, it'd be nice to kind of get back to businesses in that early year and already know whether building or code enforcement have already spoken to them, to give any business that's interested in doing it in the spring ample time. If we're now in January and just getting the building department involved, it could push it back and not give them plenty of time. So if we could push that timeline back slightly.
Absolutely.
As far as the other staff.
And I think that's fair, and we can certainly have those conversations really immediately just to find out, again, if there's 20 businesses that think they could benefit from this, I think it's worth all of us jumping on that. If it's two or three, then that might change our perception on how this would work. And as we discussed last time too, parklets are very beneficial potentially for businesses, but there's also opportunities for the town. You know, as we're talking here in a minute about things like adding outdoor seating, picnic tables and the like, just to create space for people to be able to socially distance outside right now. Identifying areas that maybe are underutilized for parking and transforming those parklets into little miniature parks is a valuable thing to have, you know, some information about as well. So I think that can also be included in the business side of it and maybe on the town side of it as well.
Has your committee met yet in the last, since you presented to us?
Yes, and Natalie's going to present some more information about where our committee's at. We've just now kind of gotten the committee together to kind of identify some beautification projects that we're going to work on short term and long term, so Natalie will provide more info on where we're at with that process.
Okay. Anyone have questions for Jeff, I guess, before Natalie? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
President Cook, Counsel, Mayor, I'll just pick up where Jeff left off. We have a beautification committee. Ted Mueller is actually the chairman, and he's not able to be here tonight.
I'm sorry, who'd you say, Natalie?
Ted Mueller. Sorry, if you can't hear me, you're under.
Why don't you take it off? I can't hear you.
Can we turn up the microphones? Okay, thank you. You might want to pull the microphone closer to you.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Ted Mueller, he's our chairman. He wasn't able to be here tonight, so I'm going to give you a brief update. The Easton Business Alliance formed the beautification committee, and that, of course, chaired by Ted Mueller. He's also an Easton Business Alliance board member. The process that we have begun is, the committee is inviting downtown stakeholders, artists, and other passionate individuals to participate in the committee. We would really like to see the public, individuals that are interested in the beautification of our town, to reach out to Jeff, and it's Jeff at discovereaston.com, and let them know that they're interested because we would really love to have some volunteers to help and to have some fresh ideas. You know, we would really like to hear from our town. And then our timeline for this, short term, September and October, we would like to focus on the short-term goals and fact-finding for long-term ideas. In September, November, the committee finalizes recommendations for 2021, but that, maybe that needs to be moved up, just so if you need us to, let us know. So November and December, research on final recommendations, and then we were going to present the final recommendations, January 2021. So presentation of beautification recommendations to the council, to you, but if we need to move that up, we can do so. And some of the short term for September and November, we thought would work out well. We could do it sooner than later, so we would have something done instead of, you know, not having anything. And refurbish the planners around town. They're there, they can be refurbished, make, you know, new flowers, and just they'll look nice. And then also, like Jeff was referring to, picnic tables, trash cans, and sanitizing stations. So with the picnic table areas, we would definitely make sure that we would have trash cans and hand sanitizing stations in the area. And then there's also some added outdoor seating possibilities that you can see, there's more detail to go over there. And then our midterm, the start would be May 2021, are hanging baskets. We're doing a lot of research and homework to get our facts together so that we could accomplish this. It would be really nice. And did you want to say anything else about hand sanitizing stations or the kiosks? Jeff? Okay.
Natalie have a question?
Sure.
So are you doing, are you taking minutes from each of these meetings?
I have not been, but Ted Mueller has, but I can definitely take minutes as well.
Well, all I'm saying is that rather than present it to us at one time at the end, if you could keep us informed on what people are thinking, that would help us then if we have input that we want to give, then we have the opportunity to do that at the same time.
Sure.
Because especially with hanging baskets, that's an issue that's been around before. And of course, you know, who's going to water them, things like that. So, you know, we can at least suggest, here are some things to look at.
Okay. In your notes, you'll see that we did cover, you know, the watering options and are working through that. So yes, I didn't want to get into all the details tonight, but I will definitely keep you, we will keep you posted.
Yeah, to keep us informed, that's just really helpful.
Absolutely. Sure. Any other questions? Turn it back over to Jeff.
I'll make sure I have my notes here. So hand sanitizing stations, we identified as being very important if we're going to add additional outdoor seating. That's not one restaurant, business property and the like, because the restaurants will take care of those as they need to. But if we have picnic tables in our parks or maybe on larger private land, then it would just be nice to have signage that lets folks know how to take care of those areas, trash cans nearby, and sanitizing stations. And I think it's also really worth exploring, just having those available downtown anyway as we're, you know, really focused on reopening, making downtown safe for people to come back, even in just areas where they have to interact with the kiosk or where they take the maps from the map holders, anything that really forces them to have to make that contact, it'd just be nice, I think, to have that available, and they could be mounted to those areas or near those areas and maintained. And as Natalie reported, and I think it's a great suggestion, we'll be more than happy to send along our minutes, our agendas, just so we know where we're at with the process because, as Mrs. Silverstein has mentioned, it is more than just idea generations. It's things like who's going to take care of the watering plants, who's going to be responsible for hanging them. And I do want to give a shout out to Public Works, who's already been very integral in helping us kind of brainstorm these ideas, telling us where we might have some hiccups, and also coming on to say they'll help us with maybe developing some of these prototypes so that we can see how the look, take some pictures, and present those to you as well. And then, of course, getting the community as involved as we can because I think that will really strengthen the core, getting people downtown, getting people really focused on these efforts, I think makes the most impact, rather than just saying, oh, we painted this, we did this, let's, you know, job well done. So yes, any other questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Yeah, I have one question. So you've put some billboards in the downtown area telling people to stay four Frenchies apart. People have asked me, what does that mean? And my suggestion is that, you know, if you're going to do things like that, you need to get it out to the public, you know, through social media, through the newspapers, stuff like that, so people understand what we're trying to accomplish.
Sure. Yes, we have those down, and we also lent our waterfowl themed ones to Avalon, so they have those for the farmer's market. And we do have someone on social media, but I think that's a great idea, is really expanding that, letting folks know that we certainly are advocating for safe travel, safe social distancing. The resources are available on our website that show the latest CDC guidelines, that maybe folks that are coming into town for the first time in a while, they can certainly find out what are the regulations for masks and the like. But I do, I think that's a great idea, is really expanding as much as possible so that people are aware of what they can do and where the resources are available.
Yeah, there's an Easton, as you all know, Facebook site that gets a lot of play, and so that's a good place to get information out.
Yes.
And then as far as artists and things, for ideas, you know, Joseph Price did the cultural crossing. I'm sure she probably can put you in touch with some great Easton artists and local artists.
Absolutely. We are really focusing too. This is somewhat part of beautification, but as everybody knows, First Friday, we brought that back last month. We are looking to try and bring in more performers, traveling musicians that can go around the town during those hours, weekends, just to get more, you know, more liveliness around town, especially when it's traveling. It doesn't, people don't congregate in one area for more than a little bit, and it really kind of spreads the entertainment around a bit. And that's part of, it's beautification and arts. We're trying to really integrate the arts and entertainment district into this committee because we feel that there's synergy from both, and there's really opportunities there that will also help us with the grants and the like as well too.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Thank you.
Or actually, anyone in the group.
Natalie. Tracy, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 6124, a resolution in the town of Easton adopting additional fiscal policies.
Good evening again. You'll recall, we've had a couple of workshops with our financial advisor, Davenport, in looking towards the issuance of a 2020 bond. A few years ago, they recommended some additional fiscal policies be implemented for the town of Easton that help to maintain our good status with the rating agencies, both Fitch and Moody's. And these are policies that have become the norm in their review process. So this evening, you have three policies that are recommended for your consideration and passage tonight. The first is debt service as a percentage of the general fund expenditure with a threshold of 10%. Currently, we're in and around the 9% tile as we speak today, so we're within that. The second is debt service as a percentage of full market value, and that is at 1.5%. The state median for that is at 1.6. Any number below that is more favorable. For example, today, we are currently only at about a half a percent. So that one certainly has some room for us to grow if we choose to do that. The last is a total fixed cost as a percentage of general fund expenditures. This one's a little bit more complicated, but it takes into consideration our OPEB responsibilities, our pension responsibilities, and some of those other fixed costs that we incur on an annual basis. They add those together and then compare them to our general fund expenditures. Today, we are at about 22%. Today, we are at about 22%, and this threshold is requested to be set at 25%. Davenport has reviewed this resolution, as have the staff, and we believe that it is ready for your consideration this evening.
Someone, anyone have any questions for Mr. Richardson on this?
So with our, the debt that we plan on taking on with the bond, will any of this be negatively affected by that at all?
So we, one of the first exercises that we did with them when we were looking at the 2020 bond issuance was making sure that we didn't go over any of these metrics in a way that would negatively impact our ratings. We believe that it will not. In fact, we have more borrowing capacity than what we would, I think, ever consider. We are doing some strategic structuring in our 2020 bond issuance when we get to that point, which helps that. I believe, though, there are two small years where we go over our general fund expenditures, but the financial advisors believe that that's not harmful.
Motion for approval.
Second.
All right. Mrs. Ruff?
Mr. Silverstein?
Aye.
Mr. Abatella?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Reverend Davis?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there anyone out there who has anything to bring before the council this evening? Large group, I guess. Council members?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you to the council for, thank you to the council for supporting the Easton Volunteer Fire Department. I think it's important that the folks in town know, and you'd be surprised how many don't, that the department is completely volunteer. So besides answering your call at two in the morning, they also spend a lot of time training and fundraising, so any little bit the community can do to help is greatly appreciated. So, thanks.
And thank you to the fire department for having such a great golf tournament.
Yes.
It was fun. All right, nothing else tonight? Take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Good night. [applause]